Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order this session of the Tacoma Park City Council. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Stewart.
Here, sorry. You never call me first.
Councilmember Hobart.
My microphone's here.
Councilmember Kareshi.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
Present.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes, I'm here.
Thanks.
Here.
Okay. Let's see. Tonight, we begin with a public hearing on city election date changes and sharing of polling places with Montgomery County in the 2018 general election. As folks probably know, in 2015, voters showed their support for having the council consider changing the date of city elections to coincide with Maryland statewide general elections. Holding city and state elections together will increase voter turnout in city elections and increase the diversity of residents who turn out to vote. To enable the change to begin in 2018, the city charter would need to be amended. It would need to be changed so that the date from an odd number of years to even number of years. And it would also set one-year term for the mayor and the council members elected in 2017. Regular two-year terms would resume beginning with the November 2018 election. The city council would like to hear from residents this evening before beginning the charter amendment process, since holding the state and city elections in separate rooms in those same polling place was not anticipated when the advisory question was presented to voters in 2015. With this proposed change in 2018, residents arriving at their polling place would check in, receive a ballot, and vote in the state election. Next, they would go to a separate room, check in, receive a ballot, and vote in the city election. Voting by mail would be separate, and as it has always been, Tacoma Park voters would apply to the city clerk's office for a vote-by-mail ballot. And to receive a state ballot, Tacoma Park voters would apply to Montgomery County Board of Elections. Early voting for the city contest would also be separate. While voters would be able to vote early at one of the 11 Montgomery County early-voting sites for the state election, early voting for the city election would be separate. City early voting would take place in Tacoma Park, most likely at the community center, and one or two other locations may be added. So now, a few people signed up to speak to this this evening during our public hearing. Did Elizabeth Wallace?
No, she's not.
Oh, she's not speaking, okay. All right. Joe Edgell is the next on the list.
Mayor, councilmembers, Joe Edgell, 1001 Elm Avenue. While I support shifting the elections as is proposed, I do have a concern that doing a one-year election period and then having another election is going to significantly increase the cost to the city. It seems silly to run an election and then turn right around and run an election again and to have the double cost. It seems to me that it would make more sense to run the election and have a three-year period instead of a two-year period. And I've spoken with a few of you, and I know there are concerns about extending the council terms a year more than you were elected for, but if the cost savings to the city was there, I think the voters would probably accept that. At a minimum, I would ask that you do a cost analysis and publish this cost analysis to the citizens of the city to show how much more it's going to cost to do it with two elections back-to-back instead of doing it in a three-year cycle, so a one-year cycle instead of a three-year cycle, and have those cost comparisons for people to take a look at. Alternatively, just do it on a three-year cycle, and I think that would be better. Thank you.
The next person who signed up to speak during the public hearing is Marilyn Kettering. Oh, you can just go up next.
Merlin Kettering. And I have come to say I'm in favor of it. Anything that can be done to increase the participation of voting in this and any election, I encourage.
Now, we'll take anyone else who would like to speak during the public hearing regarding the city election date change.
Hi, I'm Tom Gagliardo. I used to be deeply involved in the politics of Tacoma Park. I haven't been for many years. I'm distressed by this proposal, and I oppose it. And the reason is the following. It is a civic celebration every two years on Election Day when we come to a central location, this building that we're in now, and we see all of you and the people who might challenge you, and we get to engage with you as we walk into the building. And in the run-up to the election, we either see you when you knock on our doors, I know you did on mine, or we see your literature. If the only objective is to run up the voter participation numbers, then I suggest that what you really want to do is do what Oregon does, mail everybody an absentee ballot. I'm not specifically suggesting that, because when I thought about speaking tonight, you know, I'm a lawyer, and so I think about themes when I make presentations, and the first theme I thought about was, if it's not broke, if it isn't broken, don't fix it. If it's broken, fix it with the right tool. And then I thought, no, the real theme tonight is, "All the Glitters Isn't Gold." So simply raising numbers by saying we're going to have voting for municipal offices at the same time as either the gubernatorial and related offices are run or the presidential election and related offices, I think it's a false goal. I want a committed community, a community that cares, a community that understands the importance of municipal government and the things that all of you do. And we've actually lost that over the years. I mean, I was very active here in the early and mid-'80s and sometime thereafter. There's no question, there's an enormous drop-off in citizen participation. I was talking to my sister before coming over here tonight, and I said, you know, my concern is, I may not get to speak till 10 or 11 o'clock tonight. I was quite frankly surprised. You know, I saw when, you know, the parking lot wasn't full, and then I walked in the room, and there's almost nobody here. What drives up voter participation is, first of all, contested elections. And I forgot my notes, but the number of uncontested elections is staggering. It's more than 75% of the elections are uncontested. Now, you can't fix that. You're the guys who run. You're the guys who either get credit for running or punishment for having served. But, you know, with uncontested elections, you're not going to get voter participation. Doesn't matter, I watched the video, what day of the week you hold the election, or whether you have early voting, or whether you have voting, you know, at multiple locations.
Thank you.
That's called democracy by egg timer. It was opposed when I was the city attorney.
I'm sorry, sir.
It should be opposed tonight. There's nobody here tonight.
I'm sorry, sir.
I'm done, but that's democracy by egg timer.
Excuse me, we have processes. It's clearly, I'm saying this for everyone else, there are processes clearly on the website, and we've reiterated them here numerous times. Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak at the public hearing tonight regarding the elections?
Hello. So I'm Rob Ritchie. I am a longtime resident of Tacoma Park and also executive director of Fairvote, and good to see you all. And I think this enterprise is a worthy one. And I think that, actually, you're seeing this conversation happen in different places around the country. And I think, as the previous speaker said, you know, there is low turnout, and there's, you know, different things that would affect it, but I think this clearly is the change that would likely affect it in the most straightforward, simple way. And that's why this conversation is happening in multiple places. Even tomorrow, there's going to be a hearing in Annapolis about whether to move our state and county elections to presidential years rather than congressional midterms, because our state and county officials never face that bigger presidential electorate. And so, you know, I think it's a worthy discussion. And I think, kind of relating to what it means for the engagement of you and elected officials and candidates with Tacoma Park residents, is that more of them will learn about government, in part because it'll be something that'll be part of that election season. And I think that that's a good thing, and we might see more people coming to hearings if they just have that much more of a sense that your body exists and is doing the work that it's doing, which I think, by the way, is an admirable group of people. I also wanted to say that some of the workaround solutions that I understand are kind of part of this solution for next year, or for when this would kick in, do not need to be there forever. For instance, in San Francisco, they've actually just passed non-citizen voting for school board elections. They have instant runoff voting, ranked choice voting, and they do it in a consolidated way, in a much more complicated electorate. And I think that our state Board of Elections team could be a little more innovative when it comes to this kind of thing, and ultimately, they will. And I think, like, doing the right thing here and leading the way, which Tacoma Park has done on multiple suffrage issues, is a way to help move that along so that more jurisdictions can have the chance to do this, too. So I think, in sum, I think this is a promising change, and I will, as probably was mentioned earlier, but I just arrived a little bit ago, we did see a rather strong expression of support from the voters, and that is something to be listened to, too. So Brexit won with 52% without actually many details, and they're doing it, whether good or ill. This one was, what, 83% or something like that? So I hope that you all can keep the ball moving forward, so thank you for your work on it.
Thank you. Any other comments regarding the city election date change? You can come up to the podium, please. You just state your name and where you live.
Lynn Bradley, 7305 Maple Avenue, a long time on Flower Avenue before that. First of all, I want to say I really appreciated Peter's analysis of the issues around this in your blog, and I agree with you, I think this is a close call. It's sort of like 51-49%, and my two comments would be, one, it is a close call. Two, I don't really see, I know there's been a lot of discussion, and there's been a lot of discussion about the administrative issues, but the question of how you really get people out to vote, whether it's by precinct or in one place in the city, you know, that dynamic, I think, is different. Having worked on a lot of campaigns in every part of the city, primary city, other campaigns, the single main motivator to get people out is a candidate working on issues of interest. I think the date doesn't necessarily mean anything, and I would worry that moving to the, what do I call it, the state years, the major election years, that the candidates and the issues for this city will be drowned out by the governor's race, the state assembly race, all these other things. Now, historically, people rely on phone calls to do their campaigning. My experiences, and I'll bet yours, are that, or decreasingly, those are, or increasingly, they are less effective, because people have cell phones, and we won't go into that. And so, how we go into a more social media environment, which has already started, obviously, especially in a city where we have, we would be competing, if you will, with the exposure and time with other bigger, with due respect, bigger offices, maybe not more important offices, but ones that would tend to get more exposure. I think, to me, I line up on the 51% against changing the date. So for, and I think there is not enough, as I said, not enough data, the impact on, not just the soft stuff about, you know, hugging everybody on one election day in one spot, but the other, those other kind of dynamics would tend to me to, and I think will change, and when I say politicize, I don't mean it negatively. Lord knows, I think P should, politics is good, but I think it will politicize it in a way that, I don't know if that's what you intend. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments on the city election date change and sharing of polling places? No? Okay. Then we'll move on. Thank you for coming to the public hearing this evening. On our agenda tonight, we have actually two changes this evening. We're going to move the resolution encouraging Tacoma Park landlords to house refugees to next week. We've been asked to have our city attorney just take a look at that quickly, and we'll do that next week. And our consent agenda, consent agenda with resolutions regarding state legislation is going to be moved to next week as well, since we did not have time to post all those resolutions. So both of those will be moved to the following week. No other agenda changes for this evening. Looking forward next week, Wednesday, oh, before I forget, Friday morning, March 3, we will have a community coffee at 8:00 a.m. at Capital City Cheesecake. I will be there with councilmember Kareshi and members of the city staff. And then on Wednesday, March 8, we will have the first reading ordinance approving a mutual aid agreement with the City of Laurel, a resolution providing for appointments to the Noise Control Board, a resolution encouraging Tacoma Park landlords to house refugees, the consent agenda we were supposed to have tonight. And then we'll have three work sessions. One will be a presentation and work session regarding subdivision application for the property on the northeast quadrant of Ethan Allen Avenue and Jackson Avenue, a discussion of stormwater requirements, proposed projects in the stormwater fee, and a review of the New Hampshire Avenue plans and next steps. And then, just so folks know, on Thursday, March 9, there is another Tacoma Junction Community Consultation Meeting from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. here in the Azalea Room. And then Sunday, March 12, it will be the same, basically the same meeting as on March 9, and it will be from 3:00 to 5:00 p.m. Sunday, March 12, at the fire station meeting room on Carroll Avenue. That then takes us to Wednesday, March 15. We will be here for our regular meeting. Our voting session is a first, attentively scheduled, first reading ordinance amending the city code regarding requirements for riding on sidewalks, which we have a work session on this evening. And then we have a second reading ordinance approving a mutual aid agreement with the City of Laurel, and a work session on status report, attentively scheduled, the status report on the Piney Branch Elementary School feasibility study. On Wednesday, March 22, the city council will begin at 6:00 p.m. with a closed session on public safety, and then we'll come to our open meeting, our public meeting, at 7:30 with a presentation from the Village of Tacoma Park and a presentation from our Safe Roadways Committee and their annual report and recommendations on traffic calming. Our voting items for the evening on Wednesday, March 22, is a second reading ordinance amending the city code regarding requirements for riding on sidewalks and a resolution regarding the subdivision application on Ethan Allen and Jackson property. And that takes us, then, all the way through to April, so we'll stop there. Now, we'll take public comments on voting items. We have one voting item tonight, which is a second reading ordinance approving extension of payments in lieu of taxes, pilots, for properties on Flower Avenue, University Boulevard, and Houston Court. Are there any comments on that voting item tonight? Then I will open it up, then, for public comments on whatever folks would like to comment on this evening.
Good evening, and I'm Stephanie Welch, and I'm speaking on behalf of Barbara Muehlbacher to the city clerk. Due to a prior incident of me losing consciousness while making comments during a city council meeting, I hereby request that my comments be read and recorded by, well, by me now, during public comments. Thank you. Dear mayor and city council members, I urge the city council and mayor to legalize riding bicycles on sidewalks in Tacoma Park. As a bike commuter, I ride along Ethan Allen Avenue to the metro station. It is very dangerous to ride a bicycle on Ethan Allen Avenue, given the narrowness of the road, lack of shoulder, and immense traffic, including many buses and trucks. The sidewalk is a much safer option. The sidewalk is wide enough for two wheelchairs to pass each other, and so surely wide enough for pedestrians and a bicycle to pass. I have ridden my bicycle on the sidewalk for many years, admittedly, and I've never encountered a situation that would have endangered a pedestrian by my actions. I'm always courteous toward pedestrians slowing down and giving enough notice, time, and space to pass. Some people argue that if a cyclist does not feel safe riding on a busy road, he or she can take other routes to bypass the busy road. Ethan Allen Avenue is the most direct road with the least incline for me to get to the metro station. Having today neighborhood roads significantly increases elevation changes, speed bumps, and stop signs, which all contribute to a ride that requires much more energy and time. As anyone who has ever ridden a bicycle can attest, having to go up and down, stopping and starting several times, takes a lot of energy, and it discourages a lot of people from using a bicycle as transportation. To encourage bicycle transportation, safe and easy routes need to be provided. This includes allowing riders to use sidewalks, especially where other safety features such as bike lanes or even shoulders are not available. Thank you, Barbara Muehlbacher.
Thank you. Any other public comments this evening?
Thank you for that, for Barbara, I really appreciate it. Joe Edgell, again, Elman Larch, councilmember, mayor. I know you are talking about this in a work session, the bikes-on-sidewalk issues. I've had some email exchanges with a few of you, which I really appreciate. I'm here on behalf of the Safe Roadways Committee on this matter. We have, as you know, recommended this. There's a couple of things I want to note for your conversation. One of those is that there's a paucity of data on this, hard data. There are a few studies, not a lot. One of the studies that looked at this is out of Japan, and it's probably the most extensive study. That study looked at the volume of traffic, the amount of pedestrians versus bicycles. And what they found is, if there are a lot of pedestrians, like in a big, busy city sidewalk, then yeah, there can be conflicts between pedestrians and bicycles. But based on the number of bicycles that we have in Tacoma Park, it's not going to be a problem, according to this study out of Japan. There just won't be the conflicts, because there isn't enough quantity of either cyclists or people who walk. One of the other things to think about is, I know there will be probably some discussion about what cycling groups themselves have recommended. And most of those cycling groups want biking infrastructure, they want bicycle lanes, they want separated bike lanes, because that's safest. That encourages the most people to get out of the cars and try a bicycle. We're not going to get that on Ethan Allen Avenue, at least not in any foreseeable time, and we're probably not going to get a complete one on Carroll Avenue. Why? It's a narrow roadway, and it's a state highway, and state highways, as you all know, does not play well with each other, with other people, rather. So we are not saying riding on sidewalks is the best solution. What we are saying is that riding on sidewalks is an acceptable solution. It's a compromise. The compromise is not ideal. If the city council is prepared to take some property on Ethan Allen Avenue and build a protected bike lane, great, you don't need to ride on sidewalks. You're going to do that on Carroll Avenue, no problem. You're going to do that on University Boulevard, New Hampshire Avenue, no problem. New Hampshire Avenue has a rec center. People need to get to the rec center by bicycle. So we ask you to just let some of your concerns go, try this, take a chance, and if it doesn't work, we can change the law back. It'll be pretty easy to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Machui?
Hi, everybody. Thanks for coming. Thank you. Counsel.
Mayor. Everybody else, sorry. Thank you, Mary Jane Machui, Ward 2. I'm here, I started Parents of Special Needs Adults under Village of Tacoma Park, under the auspices of Wolfgang, Dr. Wolfgang Mergner, who I have a lot of gratitude for, also for the people who, the mayor and city administrator who have come to our meetings. And, oh, and I'm sorry, Mr. Kvar, but I'm also coming here for a special thing, it sort of ties in. I'm having, I'm 68 years old. I'm getting less and less prone to liking to mowing lawn in front of my house, but I will, since the sidewalk was installed two years ago, I will be fined a very high amount if I don't keep it updated. Even before, we've lived, me and my ex-husband lived there for 32 years. We kept it cut so pedestrians can walk safely in front of our house for over 32 years. But yet, other people down the street don't do that. They figure just because there's a sidewalk on the other side, that's okay. It's not. You all say you like immigrants. Well, our regular carrier is from Columbia, and she's a very nice lady. She has to take all this heavy stuff, really hard package in her bag, and she has to walk other side of the street where there's no sidewalk, and people refuse to, I'm just asking for this much for her and me and other people, to cut their vegetation down. They can still have their community gardens, they can have their, whatever they want. I don't care, but they just keep this much down. So she and me and other people can walk in front of their houses, and it's just neighborly. You go to the Prince George's County, it used to be Prince George's County side, they're all neat like that. They all keep their vegetation down. But some of the people that live in Montgomery County side, a shame on you, few of you, you know, you think you can grow these big bushes, and then some of you even let it go into the street and crash, and scratch cars, and you think it's okay. But you all can be, I hate to say it, lazy, or lazier than me, and get away with it, and I just don't think it's fair. Sorry. I mean, just that much, please. Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Machui. Any other public comments this evening?
Arthur David Olson, Hancock Avenue. I sent this in to the city clerk earlier today, so I'll go ahead and make this comment despite the agenda change. I thank city staff and the council for crafting and considering a resolution on refugee housing. I hope the resolution can be given some teeth, or at least baby teeth. One way to do so is to further resolve that the council will appropriately use a landlord's refugee housing history and plans when considering matters involving a landlord. Doing so puts landlords on notice that when they ask for concessions and the council wonders what it is the city's getting in return, part of the answer can be refugee housing. Another possibility is to ask or direct the city manager to add the matter of refugee housing to relevant city forums. The addition might be similar to an equal employment opportunity notice, simply stating that the city council encourages refugee housing. Or the addition might be a checkbox, asking whether a landlord has provided refugee housing in the last 12 months. Either addition would be like the environmental, financial, and equity impact portions of council agenda items, serving as a reminder to landlords to consider refugees' needs for housing. Thank you.
Any other public comments this evening? Perfect. We'll go to council comments now. Councilmember Smith, have you had your light on? Okay, then you can go first.
First question for the city manager. Now it is.
Now you're on.
All right, good. Can you provide council an update on the transition or the purchase of the Pepco lights? I got a question in an MML chapter meeting about how it's going, and so I would like to provide councilmember from Somerset the latest information. Thank you. And I also would like to thank the principal of Don Bosco, Crystal Ray, Principal Savoy, and Father Conway. This past week, they gave me a tour of this fantastic school in Tacoma Park on Larch Avenue. It's a possible site for lunch and learn. If you ever get a chance, you should go. If you ever get a chance, you should go by this school. It is unbelievable. It's a Catholic school that has a work-study program, so businesses, law firms around the community, in the District of Columbia, they make contributions to the school, and the students work at least once a month at these institutions so they can get practical work experience. And 98% of the student body gets to attend college. So, it's an unbelievable institution. I hope that the city of Tacoma Park can do more with them, but they are a hidden gem in our city. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Mau.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to mention an issue which I know some of my colleagues are aware of, but members of the public might not be, which is the plans that are underway for expansion of Piney Branch Elementary School, in particular, the addition of five more classrooms in that school. The school itself is actually slated for a full renovation in half a dozen or more years. I'm not sure what the timeline is for that, but in the shorter term, the school board and the planning staff are looking at different design options to renovate the school, some of which would result in the elimination of the public pool that serves both the school and the community, and others of which would not. In particular, all the designs that are now preferred, the intermediate shortlist, would make the playgrounds behind the school far more handicap accessible to schoolchildren. In the school, create a more seamless access point between the school and the playgrounds without involving stairs. All of the designs would involve the installation of more parking. I believe in all the designs, the parking would be underground or below-surface parking in the back of the school, under that area to walk to the playgrounds. But this key question about the pool, keeping the pool or not keeping the pool, is in play between the different designs that the county staff are looking at. And they will almost certainly forward multiple designs on to people further up in the school system, and eventually to the school board to consider. And that issue, if the pool is important to the community, and the design of the classrooms and the teacher's space, is going to be an issue that the public in Tacoma Park needs to get engaged on, because there are people who we elect who will ultimately make this choice, and it is better for them to hear from us than not hear from us. So, that process is going to play itself out over the next months and year. I'm not sure how long it's going to take, but it's a really important issue for the community. In particular, the problem that this is all addressing is the capacity of the school to provide an educational environment, an uncrowded educational environment for children, our growing population of children in the community. And that ability to have a high-quality school is tied to property values. Whether people move here or not is partly dependent on whether their kids will be in a classroom of 28 people in a trailer, or whether they'll be in a classroom with 22, 23, 24 kids, or 17 kids, when my daughter first went to school at that school. So, it's tied to the prosperity of the city. It's tied to the continued function of a really important recreational resource in the community, and it's tied to the school itself. So, I just wanted to raise that issue. Thank you.
And they will be doing a presentation for the city council.
Great. And I think there was a meeting, a public meeting tonight as well.
The last one was tonight, actually. So, all right. Councilmember Kovar, you're up.
Thank you, Mayor. I paid close attention to the rolling agenda when you were here tonight.
Thank you.
A few things I wanted to mention. One, reference was made earlier to the Tacoma Junction Advisory Committee, which is the name I prefer for the committee, which is shorter and easier to say. The meetings that took place, I was able to go to the one on Sunday, and I really urge residents to try to make the time to attend the meetings. At the meeting that I went to, there was a series of photos of lots of different looks that the development could have, and you can actually go online and do the survey with all of the same photos. I don't remember the specific survey connection, but if you go to the city website and type in Tacoma Junction, you'll easily find your way there on the prompts. There wasn't as much lead time as we had wanted in the meetings, and so we may add a few more meetings, but I encourage people to try to go. It's a really excellent opportunity. The second thing is, yesterday, I was able to go to Annapolis and to testify in the State of Maryland House Judiciary Committee in support of the Trust Act. That's the short name for this legislation that approaches the question of immigration on a statewide basis, and would bar local law enforcement from asking people about their immigration status, and a few other related matters. And it has some similarity, and the principles are the same as what we've had here as a sanctuary city since 1985, that was laid out so well in the recent teaching that we had here. So, there was a big group of people who testified. It ended up being kind of late, but it was great to have an opportunity to do that. We had county councilmember Berliner, a number of other local officials from around the state, members of the state assembly, et cetera. And so, this is just another step in the process, but hoping that we can have that passed. And then, a third thing I just wanted to mention, I know that was just a public hearing earlier on the election question and the synchronization and so on, but one issue came up that I thought it was worth just my commenting on briefly, and that's this issue of whether, if we merge our elections into a time period, even years, when these other elections are happening, would we sort of get lost in the shuffle? And obviously, we don't want that to happen, and I really don't think it will for this very specific reason. The primary happens earlier, so by the time our elections are in full swing in the fall, in September and October, all the primaries will have happened. And if you know what this election, what this community is like in terms of its representation, heavy democratic representation, I don't see a lot of campaigns at that point sending heavily into this area and having people going door-to-door. It'd be pretty much left to us at that time, at that point in the process. So, I feel pretty confident that folks will still be able to pay attention to us. It'll be harder during the primary season, I agree, but in September and October, if you're running for office in Maryland and you're a Democrat, you're not throwing your resources into Tacoma Park on the whole. Thanks.
Great. Councilmember Schultz?
Several things. I want to thank councilmember Smith for his comments about Don Bosco Crisco Ray, which is in Ward 6. I've been touting that school and the extraordinary success that that school manages, because most of the kids that attend that school don't live in Tacoma Park. They come from about 17 different zip codes, and there are income qualifications, so that your income has to be below, family household income has to be below a certain level in order for you to even apply, to get into the school. It is a work-study program. The kids work in major companies. They have, they go to school, obviously, like all kids do, five days a week, except one of those days, they don't go to school, they go to work. And like the freshman class goes to work on Mondays, and they rotate that through the week, so that at the end of their four years, they will have either worked for one company for four years, or maybe four different companies over four years. They have a work resume that stands up, and so they go to college, most of them, virtually all of them, for all intents and purposes. It's a, Don Bosco Crisco Ray was founded in Chicago, gosh, back in the '70s, I think. There's a whole bunch of them across the United States, including one in Baltimore. But anyway, it is a model for us to look at, and I encourage people to visit the school because it is, it is really amazing. I had the opportunity this past week to testify at the Senate, state senate hearing on Senate Bill 883, which was a bill that would, if passed, make voting by minor, non-citizens in any municipality in Maryland illegal. There's about a half a dozen or more, seven or eight municipalities in Maryland, including Tacoma Park, that allow non-citizens to vote. And that includes, in our case, of course, completely undocumented citizens. And it was interesting to hear the proponent of this bill make the case as best he could that this was a good thing to do. This is before the judiciary, I forget the name of the committee, doesn't make any difference. But most of the questioning suggested that it was probably not going to be passed by or get out of committee, so I don't think we need to worry too much about that bill. But those who supported the bill, and I, of course, spoke in opposition to the bill, I was challenged on the issues that are right. So, we got into a literal debate, which is very unusual in these things, because usually you get your two minutes, three if you're lucky, and then they say next, and so you scramble on out of there, and that's the end of your day. I was confronted with the question of, the question is, is what is the value or the importance of citizenship? This was the answer, the question I had to ask from one of my, from one of the state senators, Senator Wall, as it turns out. So, I told him, I says, "Well, gee, this is a question that I have not had to answer since I was in high school." I had to dig deep. I mean, you know, open up old doors that hadn't been investigated in my brain for a really long time. I won't bore you with my response, but I think it was a great response. I'm learning to use words like great and unbelievable. It's true.
Huge.
Huge. Thank you, thank you, thank you. A lot. Anyway, I guess this is just more of an anecdote, but I do want you to know that not everybody in the state of Maryland is in league with the ideas that we carry here about the value of providing, allowing immigrants, documented, undocumented, however they may be, to vote in our city election, which we all feel very passionately about for very good reasons, which I did try to explain in my comments. Another thing that I think is worth mentioning is that in my ward, I've been addressing a couple drug dealing issues. And I'm not going to go into the details about them at all. I bring it up because it's important to understand that sometimes this stuff can be happening in our residential, quiet, green, peaceful, leaf-covered neighborhoods, and we don't know it. And the important, one of the important things to understand is that outward appearances can be deceiving, is that you can have serious drug dealing. I'm not just talking about marijuana, I'm talking about the heavy-duty stuff going on in your community, and you may not notice it. I had a constituent come to me about the fact that it was finding it increasingly difficult to park in her neighborhood at night, and wanted to know if it would be possible to get a parking permit zone. And when I learned, understood what it was all about, I realized that they didn't have a parking problem. They had a different problem. And one of the key, key things, if you can go online, you can read about how to detect these things, is when you have a residence, could be an apartment, a garden apartment, doesn't make any difference, where you have cars coming and parking, and people going in and out of houses at various times, particularly in the late evenings or early hours, without, you know, and you know that they can't be having a party there seven nights a week, that is a very strong, very strong classic indicator of drug sales going on of whatever sort. And it's easier to detect in apartment buildings, because you can usually tell from the fragrance of the drugs being used, manufactured, or whatever it might be. But when you see that sort of thing, just stay away. Call your councilmember, call the police department. I can tell you that our police department has some very, very competent people who know exactly how to address these problems. But it is happening, and has been happening, for all the years I've been living in Tacoma Park. Certainly, I'm aware of it since in my years on the city council. It's a, the police department will tell you they need our help in identifying these situations. And we're, of course, in the best position, because we live there, and we know exactly who belongs on our street and who doesn't. So, that's just what I wanted to comment on. Thank you.
Councilmember Siemens?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to assure my colleagues that I have, in fact, toured the Don Bosco Crisco Ray School. It is, as advertised, tonight. It is an excellent program, and I wish that we could figure out how to get more Tacoma Park students in there. Thank you.
All right. So, I'll just join in and say, I've been to the Don Bosco School, too, and I just got invited to their 10th anniversary, so.
Oh, for Jiffy Bacy?
Yeah. So, all right. I'd like to thank Melanie Isis today, the executive director of the Tacoma Park Langley Crossroads. She and I spent the afternoon touring businesses in New Hampshire Avenue, getting to know and just kind of checking in on some of the business owners there. I had a very nice lunch at the Caribbean Palace. And I would just like to encourage residents to visit the area. Having spoken to a number of the business owners, they are experiencing a lull in business right now. That's the shops and the restaurants. They do think people are a bit fearful of coming out. They're regular customers, they're not seeing them as often. So, there's lots over there that you can go eat, enjoy, buy some fabric, get your shoes fixed. Please explore the area if you have not been over to the crossroads recently. The next thing is, this weekend, we're beginning the CED workshops, that's Seeking Educational Equity and Diversity, and this is part of working through the Unity in the Community Initiative. We have volunteers in our community who are trained facilitators. We will be doing two workshops a month for four months. It's supposed to be a pretty intensive look at systems of power and privilege, and how we can create change in our community. There will be, I think, 20 of us going through this workshop. We hope, if it's successful, to offer it again in the future, but I'm excited and ready to get going on that. And then, the third thing is, just as councilmember Kovar said, I also attended the meeting on the Tacoma Junction redevelopment on Sunday. I was glad to see so many people come out to the meeting. I encourage everyone to do the survey. Our entire family passed around the laptop during the Oscars and did it, and it was very interesting to see how different members of my family voted on different things. It spurred a lot of discussion. So, I encourage everyone to do the survey. And also, if the staff could pass on to the committee, next time they meet, to let us know how else they're going to get out into more diverse parts of the community. I know a number of us have raised that issue. If the committee or the city staff need any other assistance, please let us know as councilmembers, how we can pull in other folks to provide their input. All right. I think that's it for me. Councilmember Smith, do you have anything on a legislative update this week?
You did have to catch me off guard.
I'm sorry.
Last week, the legislative committee did not meet, but we are meeting tomorrow. One thing that I did want to mention, we discussed some bills earlier today with our advocate. One bill that we mentioned, HB 1356 from Delegate Gilchrist, that's Montgomery County MML Chapter Priority. That's the bill to allow, to force WSSC to allow Montgomery County and Prince George's County municipalities to get WSSC to permit. MML Legislative Committee did support that bill, so even though a hearing has not been scheduled, it might be helpful if we consider whether or not we should support it.
Cool. All right. Great. I think we'll put that on hold until next week, since there's no hearing yet, and if I ask my councilmembers, colleagues, to please look at that in the Dropbox so that we can discuss. discuss it next week and if we want to take a position on it. This week, last week, we did ask you to look at a House Bill 1374 regarding State Highway Administration Neighborhood Notification Act. This is actually something that's being put forward by our newest delegate, Janelle Wilkins. It's to, the purpose of this is to require State Highway Administration to send a certain notice to nearby property owners in advance of planned construction on state highway, and if the planned construction is postponed, to also let residents know about it and nearby properties. Councilmember Smith has raised, asking for an amendment to this, that municipalities are also notified by state highway of work. And so, and after reviewing this, we'd like to ask the council if, because I think a hearing is coming up on Thursday on this one, if we would like to write just a short note supporting this bill moving forward with the amendment. As you'll recall, getting better service from state highway and more accountability is one of the things that we've talked about as a council, but we would like to see a show of hands if people would like to support Delegate Wilkins' bill on this. Any questions on that, or, all right, oh, yeah.
Thank you. I, I have a hard time supporting this bill. I appreciate the, the wish, trying to fulfill the wish to get the S H A to be fully transparent in their activities so that all of us can prepare for them, particularly, what we're really talking about is the long state highways that aren't going to be working on our local streets. But we have a lot of state highways in and around our city. But I think that it's trying to, I mean, you can pass all the bills you want, but trying to get an S H A organization to reform its, its approach, I think, is kind of like, I won't use the word hopeless, but very dubious. I'm concerned that the 100-yard measure is just sort of very arbitrary and pulled out of thin air, because 100 yards in a rural part of Maryland means no letters are going to be sent out, because nobody lives there, except maybe there's animal, you know, domestic animals and things like that. Whereas on New Hampshire Avenue, 100 yards means that you're talking about hundreds and hundreds of apartment units and things like that. And I, I think it'd be just simply better to put into law the amendment that Mr., Councilmember Smith is talking about, is that S H A be absolutely required to inform municipalities? Because we're in a far better condition, position to communicate stuff like that to our constituents if we have enough notice. In fact, I think it ought to be at least four weeks ahead of time, except in emergency situations. That's why I'm not in favor of this bill.
Any other questions or comments? No? All right, all those in favor of sending in support for this bill with the amendment put forward by Councilmember Smith, please raise your hands. One, two, that's six moving forward to one. So we will, I think the deputy city manager will send in a short testimony. All right. Thank you. Now, moving to our first voting item this evening, oh, sorry. Oh, I'm so, I'm so sorry. You have a lot, too. I don't know why I did that. I'm really sorry.
I'll try to be fast.
No, no, you have a lot. I apologize.
You have more than three minutes.
You definitely do. You have a lot there.
Thank you. I'll, I will move quickly and really, these are.
No, these are important, take your time.
I do want to follow up. Councilmember Kovar inquired about the WSSC work on Willamette Valley View. It is sewer line maintenance by WSSC. It impacts eight properties. There's easement agreements in place with those property owners, and so that, that work should be about done. One of the things that just, for those who want to get notifications about WSSC work that might infect their properties, they are, people are able to sign up online for those kinds of notices, but we're still trying to find a way to otherwise notify councilmembers.
Separate drainage issue there, which she said was likely to be in our FY18 budget is a stormwater issue there, too.
Right, right. So there's other things to happen.
Thank you.
Also, following up, Councilmember Kovar about the Shred-a-thon. We haven't done the Shred-a-thon. Sometimes we've paid for, when we're cleaning out the city storerooms, but Montgomery County does provide that occasionally, and so you can see when they schedule that for. The fun one is the dog park. It's moving right along, and we have just a couple items left. We need to install the fencing, the flexi-pave pathway, and the concrete for the driveway and entrance, but a lot of the work is done. The special grass on the slopes is installed, and the work should be done within three weeks with a grand opening set during the week of March 27.
No way.
Exactly. So, so something's going to happen. But the thing that's, the thing that's humorous, of course, is that the Saturday, if we would do something on Saturday, is April Fool's Day. So.
Oh, we have to do it.
We'll see.
Joe, you have to that April Fool's Day for opening of the dog park.
So we'd like to coordinate and get a little event together for that. I wanted to follow up on the note that Councilmember Mill talked about, the Piney Branch Elementary School Facility Study. It is a really interesting process. They do have all of their information posted online. They've been trying to be responsive to the comments that the public has made there. Tonight was the last of the kind of planning meetings. They will be coming back to the PTA at the end of this month, and that's about the time that they'd like to come to the council sometime in there. They also, the key staff met with some of city staff yesterday to talk about some options for where parent drop-off might be separated from bus drop-off and have it affect our Grant Avenue section here, some of which is through the neighborhood, which I think probably is not the best idea. But they have a number of different options that they were going to walk through and look at, and so some of that will come back to you as well. Because we're so close and we would have to share a little bit, there's going to be a place where we have a formal action, I think. A good time in the future. Those options do include footprints of the school with the pool or without the pool, so they've looked at, so that there's, that those, both those options are being considered by the public.
Just to follow up on that from one regard.
Yes.
Which is that the way the school folks are thinking about it, they're thinking about the buses remain in front and the parent parking would be on the side of the building closest to us, that's, at least that's the way it was discussed in the prior meeting. And I think that there are 18 buses in total, 18 or 21 buses in total.
Quite a few buses, yeah.
A different version of that is that the buses go through the city lot and the parents park in front, and there are 18 buses, or whatever the number of buses is, something like 18 to 20. So that seems like a lot, but it's relatively few physical vehicles compared to, and with train drivers as opposed to.
Right. The, the.
The other scenario.
We did talk a bit about some different options between where the buses go and where they don't go. I will say, in none of the options would it actually go through the city's rear lot. There's, we were also encouraging the designers to think creatively about Maple Avenue itself. Is there some way that moving the curb line one way or the other, or doing something may help facilitate a smooth movement? So I think they've got a lot of creativity work to do. I'm sure they didn't do a whole lot between yesterday and today, but over the short period of time, I think they will be investigating that. And I appreciate, we did have a number of discussions about some options that would change how the buses go. I do have some, just kind of updates. Councilmember Schultz, in particular, had sent a number of questions for, that we are reporting on here. The recreation center letters of interest should be going out on Wednesday, March 8, so next week, with responses due Friday, April 14, and we will share some of that information with you. The Housing and Economic Development Strategic Plan work is, we're in the process of finalizing the contract with the Cloud Burst Group, and so we should be setting up some kickoff meetings after just a couple weeks. And so I think that's, that's a positive thing.
This, I'm sorry, you'll be, a couple weeks for the kickoff?
Yeah.
Okay.
For those kickoff discussions.
This month, then.
Right, yes. The Glen Side Drive sidewalk project design vote concluded on February 17. An engineering firm was selected for the design. The surveying is scheduled to start this week, and then initial community meetings to review the design will likely occur in late March or early April. So Councilmember Schultz, if you need some more information about that, we'll, we'll work with you to get what you need.
Okay.
On New Hampshire Gardens repaving, WSSC's contract is still conducting sewer work in the New Hampshire Gardens neighborhood. Once their work is complete and accepted by WSSC, it will be referred to the paving office. There's been some delays between the different parts of WSSC on this project, so we do not know when the paving's actually going to start. We're just having to keep following up with them.
I am not at all surprised, and this is not a criticism of our staff at all.
Yeah, it's not, right. We're, we're just watching to see how, certainly we want WSSC to feel that they did the work correctly, so, before they pay. We did issue some code violations about code problems at Grace United Methodist Church and the house that it owns next to it, and I can provide some more information about those citations. We did find out, though, that we can't serve it to the church, we have to serve it to a different entity. And so that'll take a little bit more time, but we're getting there.
How high up do you have to go?
If I may add, you know, the, the reason that it's, I bring, asked you this, and sort of in a public sort of way, is that the, the violations have resulted in a huge growth and dispersal of rats.
Right.
Emanating from the church's facilities.
Right.
The garbage and all that. And the, and the homeowners up in that area, and maybe the other institutions that are across the street, have been dealing with this huge problem. And it's been going on for a long time, and it's embarrassing.
Well, the, the mere fact that somebody received, you know, 14 violations is, is really significant.
The community has been trying to get a meeting with the church just to have a conversation, and they've been unable to do that.
I just want to also note that we had some departures of Recreation Department staff in the normal course of things, but it gives us an opportunity to reorganize a little bit of the positions to even better address council priorities related to youth outreach. So we're, we're happy about that, and we'll be sharing some of the information and contact information about that. So I, I'm very excited that they're spending a lot of time within the staff, thinking about how to best implement the, the priorities of the council. The, the community grants program updates, the second of two informational sessions for the FY18 cycle of the community grants program will be held tomorrow evening from 7:00 to 8:00 p.m. in the hydrangea room in this building. And we had seven prospective applicants attending last week's meeting, so encourage people to come. It's very helpful so that they can apply for the various community grants related to the arts, science, technology, engineering, and math. And the kinds of projects include science or math clubs, robotics clubs, computer programming classes, concert and film series, public art, maker spaces, and technology-based internships or apprenticeship programs. So the deadline is Monday, March 13, and, and we want really good projects. The community partnership, RFPs, will be released this week. Two of the four were posted today for the Summer Meals and Enrichment Program and a Teen and Young Adult Mentoring Program. Two others that will be forthcoming pertain to food scarcity and farmers market services. We're contacting a number of potential applicants, and we also want you to spread the word to anyone that you know. One of the things that I think is interesting and I didn't know about, but it's always helpful to get these notices, is that our housing office is going out to a number of different apartment buildings to do outreach, meet the people, introduce ourselves, and we recently were at the Mapleview Apartments. And so we're doing tours and we'll let you know, but it's, it's a really nice opportunity with our housing staff, getting out in the community and meeting tenants and managers. That's great. The, let's see. One thing that I wasn't sure I'd ever get to see is that the Ethan Allen Gateway Streetscape is going out to bid. Oh, my God. It's been, I don't know how many years we've been working on it. It takes, because it's a complex project with complex funding and has to get every single T checked by S H A, it took a really long time. But we do have a pre-bid meeting scheduled for tomorrow, and we will see that project move along. Two things I'm really happy about, we've got two new key staff people on board. For our Neighborhood Services Team Supervisor, Rick Baravetia, we've been calling him Dwayne, but we found out today he likes to be called Rick, so we're, we're learning to call him Rick. He's been working here as a part-time nuisance basement officer in the late afternoons and evenings, but he has quite a background in fire service. He's got a master's in public administration, and he has a strong interest in recycling and in community discussions, and so I look forward to connecting him with, with the folks. But yeah, to, to find out, we're supposed to call him something else, I just have to get there. And we have a new planner, Daniel Sonenklar, and he, it took a little while for him to get here physically because he's been in Bogota, Columbia, and had to wrap up his commitments there and working with transportation in Bogota. And he has a lot of familiarity with this area. He used to work for COG and also with Prince George's County, and so he's wonderful, and I hope you all have a chance to meet with him very shortly.
That's very impressive.
And I want to give a kudo, Susan Chung, our finance director, passed her second of the four tests towards the CPA. So while she's doing budget prep, she's also doing CPA studying, and very happy that she's moving right along. That's it. Thanks for letting me take the time.
Yeah, sorry about that. My apologies.
I usually don't have this long a list either.
I know. It was a very useful and helpful. And just as a reminder to people, that the city manager comments are posted on the website along with the agenda items, so if you want to go back and ever reference them or search for them, you can find the old city comment, city manager comments. Now, we are up to our voting item this evening, which is the second reading ordinance approving extension of pilot payment in lieu of taxes for buildings on Flower Avenue, University Boulevard, and Houston Court. This did not change since last week, our first reading of the ordinance.
Yes, it's actually three.
Three ordinances, right.
So it should be three separate.
Oh, okay, because last week, I don't think we did it that way.
No, we didn't.
Oh, okay. So we need to call each one.
Because it's three separate buildings.
Yes.
Three ordinances.
Three different, okay. So, all right, does any, before I ask for them to be moved, does anybody have any questions? Yes, Councilmember Smith.
Thank you. So, I'm trying to understand the reason for the request. Is it? The services that are provided at the building, or is it the debt service that is coming
Good evening.
Evening.
My name's James Miller with Montgomery Housing Partnership. There are a couple of reasons. One is, we want to. that we have now. And in addition, this year comes due the cash flow debt payments to Montgomery County for the acquisition. 10 years later, they come and do, that's $56,271 a year, interest on the acquisition loan. Now, as you know, when you put, when you put this all together, you do a pro forma, you show what happens, you acquire, you acquire the property, you get as much funding as you can, you do what you can to renovate the building as much as the money will allow, and you renovate it to the best you can with the money that you have. Also, you put something in for rent increases, for expense increases, or, you know, your utilities usually go up more than what you propose, your expenses go up in your rent. We stay at the county guideline, which I wasn't here in 2006 or prior to 2006 when the building was renovated and it was put together, so I don't know what the pro forma was at the time. I'm just speaking in general, as we do on these properties. And then what happens is you try to provide the services for the residents, because we're more than just sticks and bricks. We provide these services for the residents. We want to continue to provide the services for the residents, and also be able to maintain the building. And we feel that we need this in order to be able to do this without having to cut back services to be able to maintain the rent the way we want to keep rents as low as possible, and also to maintain the community life services that we provide to our residents in training. And we do provide these services at three locations. Would like to have it on the property, but we can't, there's no place to put it on the property. But we have three places that they can actually, they go to Greenwood Terrace Community Center, 7610 Maple Community Center, which is right up the street. And they also go to Giltwood Highlands Community Centers for these services.
And so what percentage of the residents that live at 641 Houston Avenue go to these other buildings for these services?
I don't have the answer for you right offhand. I know that we have quite a few that come up there, and it varies from year to year. Our enrollment, I understand, because I'm not part of the community life, but I understand our enrollment this year was higher than it had been in previous years. So, and they do a good services. You know, for the children, we have across the board, I believe we've gone from like a 2.8 grade point average to a 3.5 grade point average. That's significant. That's something that the children, that's more than the sticks and bricks. That's something that the children can take with them throughout their life.
And the money that we're going to give you for this pilot, pilot will only be used for these three buildings, correct?
Yes, that's true.
And is the county giving a pilot?
The county is giving a pilot as well, yes.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Councilmember Mayo?
Mine is a comment, not a question. And that is that I spoke, and I know that Artie Harris was here, the meeting that I missed, I spoke to him by phone a couple of days ago, and so was able to follow up on some of the issues. And I guess I'm still not persuaded that there's a strong basis for us to take this action. So on the, on the issue of the need to pay back the county funding, we constantly struggle with tax duplication. So this would be us forgiving tax revenue to make the county, to cover a county cost. And that payback period was, of course, assumed known 10 years ago. So the appropriate thing to do 10 years ago would have been to build the request as a 20-year request, or make clear that MHP, nonprofit, would be coming back to the city, asking for us to cover county repayment in 10 years. I'm also not clear from what I learned that the social services, these wonderful programs that MHP provides, were the basis for the original assistance, the pilot that we provided 10 years ago. I thought that was for renovation of the building. And so that, to me, sort of raises questions about what was the money for, for the past 10 years. And more broadly, I think this raises questions about, are we better off using pilots to encourage, incentivize larger renovation projects, harder, more difficult, more expensive renovation projects for 10-year periods, 100%, as this pilot originally was 10 years ago, phasing down to 50? Or are we better off having continuous maintenance pilots that, once a building gets one, they would always get one? And to me, this is a really important policy conversation that we should have a longer discussion about with Ms. Sarah Danes and the City Manager, describing to us the physical implications and the policy implications of extending pilots in perpetuity on our ability to have more buildings, to be able to help more buildings and building owners of lower-income affordable housing, and sort of what those impacts would be. So that's why, you know, I appreciate this project, and I have supported every other past pilot and encouraged the city to actually proactively set a target for providing pilot funds every single year, and to put more money into pilots in general, but for the purpose of incentivizing new activities, renovation of housing. The last thing I'd say is that, as far as I can tell, this is $160 per apartment per year for the 75 apartments covered over the 10-year period for a nonprofit partnership that is committed to affordable housing. So I guess it seems, I'm not sure I understand the logic behind MHP raising rents, given its mission, if we weren't to provide this funding, and given the limited amount of funding per apartment, per family per year for the pilot.
Any other comments or questions? Anything else? Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see you, sorry. Councilmember Siemens.
You know, I've been supportive of MHP work here in the city for a long time, and yet I hear Councilmember Mayo's logic tonight, and it makes me think, and when you say these funds are really targeted towards providing the programs, the assistance programs to the residents, I wonder if we're maybe talking about the wrong thing, and we should be talking about whether this council wants to provide grants to community projects across the city, not just within the MHP buildings, but across the city to low-income children to help them with these same kinds of programs. The programs have been very successful, I appreciate that, but I wonder if this approach is just the wrong approach. And that's, I'm not at this point advocating one way or the other on the particular item that's hit before us tonight, but Mr. Mayo got me thinking.
Thank you, Councilmember Siemens. And I will say, I think that is something we can look into, especially, and also what Councilmember Mayo raised. I would say, though, I think some of our experience most recently with, say, the Montgomery County Collaborative working in Essex House and other places, is that particularly for different, some communities, having the programs be as accessible as possible and actually in their buildings is a really important component to participation, and participation of the children, participation of the parents. And so I think these are all good things for us to explore in the future. I'm going to vote for these pilots this evening, because I do want to see these programs continued, and hope that we can have a longer conversation about our pilot programs and how we do this work in the future. So with that, would someone please move the first ordinance authorizing the city to extend a payment in lieu of taxes agreement with MHP for the property at 641 Houston Avenue?
I'll move, second.
Councilmember Smith, move. Second, Councilmember Schultz. The clerk, call the roll, please.
Councilmember LeBaron?
Do you want to take those in case?
No.
Councilmember Crashee?
Aye.
Councilmember Siemens?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Schultz?
Aye.
Aye. Would someone please move the ordinance authorizing the city to extend a payment in lieu of taxes agreement with MHP for the properties at 1001, 1003, and 1005 East University Boulevard?
I'll move it.
Councilmember Schultz, move. Councilmember Smith, second. Please call the roll.
Councilmember LeBaron?
Aye.
Councilmember Mayo?
No.
Councilmember Crashee?
Aye.
Councilmember Siemens?
Aye.
Councilmember Schultz?
Aye.
Yes. The last ordinance authorizing the city to extend a payment in lieu of taxes agreement with MHP for the property at 68, excuse me, 8624 and to 8626 Flower Avenue. Someone want to move that one? Councilmember Smith, second.
I'll second it.
Councilmember Schultz. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember LeBaron?
Aye.
Councilmember Mayo?
No.
Councilmember Crashee?
Aye.
Councilmember Siemens?
Aye.
Councilmember Schultz?
Aye.
Yes. All right. Thank you very much. All right, yes.
Before we go to the next thing, could I inject something for 20 seconds?
Sure.
Just because it came up, and I couldn't say anything at the time, because I had to get permission, but Mr. Murgener, who was mentioned earlier, is actually holding a shred-a-thon at his house this Friday, and he authorized me to tell everybody about it. So it's at 104 Tulip Avenue, 10 a.m. on Friday, March 3rd. People can go there starting at 10. A box of paper will cost $5, and anyone can bring it.
Okay.
There you go.
Said he didn't do it.
Councilmember Crashee, do you have a comment as well?
He has the amount.
Okay.
I don't know what's going on.
Okay. All right. So now we'll, again, just for folks tuning in, the resolution encouraging Tacoma Park landlords to house refugees will be moved to next week, and our consent agenda items are also being moved to next week. So that brings us now to our discussion of policy for operating wheelchairs and bicycles on sidewalks. Councilmember Mayo, do you want to, since you took the lead on this, would you like to walk us through it?
Sure. Sure, and.
Okay, oh, see, yeah.
We also have, if you, then, planning in terms of.
Oh, great.
To also, can you tell me your question?
Great.
Wonderful.
Why don't I start, Jamie, and then you jump in? Great. So this was a recommendation brought to us by the Safe Roadways Committee, and the draft that we have in the agenda packet has gone through a number of iterations. Some background, the basic status quo is that bicycling on sidewalks by all residents, any residents, is illegal in the city of Tacoma Park. It is legal in DC and Montgomery County. Regardless of the rules in DC, Montgomery County, or Tacoma Park, or other jurisdictions, it seems very clear that no one is particularly aware of the restriction. So biking on sidewalks is frequently observed in many places, and in places like DC where it's legal, many people are not aware that it is legal. And that is the status quo, as far as I can tell, across the country. The particular language here does a couple of things. It addresses something that is not currently clear in our city code, which is to make clear that wheelchairs, motorized or unmotorized, can legally use sidewalks and have the same rights and responsibilities as other pedestrians. That language is verbatim from many other municipal statutes around the country. Second, and I just can't help but saying, it also eliminates some archaic language around coasting, and wheelbarrow riding, and sleigh riding, carriage riding, that I hope we strike no matter what, because it just.
Yes, we all can see ideas.
It does, it's quirky, quirky language. So, you know, there's a regulation that we would be eliminating, freeing up people to coast and sleigh as they wish. The language would allow bicycles to operate on sidewalks, except where, at the city manager's judgment, it's necessary to control safety, to restrict bicycle operation. It would require, and language in Section C is consistent with, again, other statutes in other places, audible signaling and yielding to pedestrians on sidewalks by bicycles. And lastly, and this language was, I think, much improved by the input from the city attorney, it addresses bicycles, unicycles, skateboards, carts, wagons, roller coasters, and any other device, which I suppose includes sleighs and wheelbrows, and requires that those not be operated in careless, reckless, or wanton manners or in ways that endanger property. So that language is meant to be as protective as possible, to give the police as much discretion as possible, to take enforcement action if someone is really operating unsafely. And lastly, there's alternatives at the end that would give council, where council comment tonight, I assume, is appreciated, either to have a sunset clause or to require a review within a two-year period. And Mr. Edgell from the Safe Roadways Committee referred to that this evening, talking about giving it a chance for a period of time. So just in the context, just a little bit, as a bicycle rider, this, I don't believe that this language would be encouraging bicycle riding on sidewalks. It addresses a couple of things. It allows people who are new to bicycling, including children, to either, through a perceived risk of unsafe, lack of safety in the streets, or through real risk, and we could talk about that in more detail, to learn how to ride, to start commuting by using sidewalks. And thus is likely, and I think the literature is clear on this, convinces more people to bike, because they're either safer in some situations, or they certainly perceive that they're safer in situations, and definitely allows novice riders to figure out how to ride. Secondly, the kinds of people that would use this, again, not encouraging bicycling on sidewalks, but allowing it, making it no longer legal in some situations, is that it gives more flexibility for riders to determine situations which are unsafe, that they perceive as unsafe or that are unsafe, and to use sidewalks in those situations. And so that's where, again, Mr. Edgell and other members of the public have talked about, places like Tacoma Junction or state highways, where there's a significant perception of risk to use a sidewalk. I think the literature in the city, the mayor may speak more about this, there's lots of evidence that small sidewalk residential streets with lots of curb cuts are bad places to ride bikes, dangerous for bikers, and also not particularly places that bikers would choose to ride on sidewalks, because there's less vehicle traffic, sidewalks are narrow, overgrown, and curb cuts themselves, and driveways are difficult to ride over because of the change in the surface. So I think maybe I'll just stop there and say, this is the language that we put together based on the council's direction to move forward with this a couple of weeks ago, and, or months ago, and the opportunity to move it toward a voting session in the future.
Great, terrific. Thank you very much, Councilmember Mayo, for taking the lead on that, and to the Safe Roadways Committee for the recommendation. Jamie, do you have anything else you'd like to add at this time? He did it, he did a good job?
Okay.
Okay.
Yes, something.
All right. Any comments or questions on this?
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, good, yes, sir.
So are you recommending that we should do it to be a pilot on this, or are you just recommending that we just approve it?
My recommendation is that we adopt either E or F. My experience with this body, and you, Councilmember Smith, is that if we gave ourselves two years, either way, we'd either sunset it automatically, but we'd think about it that way in two years, or we'd require ourselves to review it, and we would either sunset it or continue. So I think I would recommend one of those choices, but I don't have a strong view.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Councilmember Schultz?
You know, I've given a lot of thought to both sides of the argument, and I want to thank the mayor for the material you sent around yesterday, I think it was. And what I've heard from Mr. Edgell earlier and from Tim today, I'm not a bicyclist. And, I used to be when I was younger, but just am not. We've just opened, I'm happy to say, the bike shares, two bike share stations along New Hampshire Avenue, one in front of the Recreation Center. I guess they've been open about 10 days now, or two weeks, and one up by Kirkland in New Hampshire. But when I look at the possibilities of how people are going to navigate from those two locations, the one in front of the Rec Center, if you want to go anywhere in Tacoma Park, you're going to have to, you know, cross New Hampshire Avenue. Well, you can do that at a traffic light, but then you're going to have to go up or down on New Hampshire Avenue if you hope to go anywhere seriously within the city of Tacoma Park. And having lived along New Hampshire Avenue for years, I would be, unless you're a very experienced cyclist, I think a lot of people would be absolutely terrified to have to ride in the curb lane of a road that carries 35,000 vehicles a day, even though the speed cameras have done an awful lot to slow traffic down and reduce accidents. But the way I look at it is that in some sections of the city, it's just, there are just situations where people really need to be. it's just, there are just situations where people really need to be able to use the sidewalk. Uh, because I'd rather have somebody get, you know, bruised and banged up on a sidewalk than have them killed or seriously maimed by an automobile. Uh, and, and I, I, I kind of am inclined to agree with Councilmember Mel, uh, and his perception of, of, of this. I, and I, I, it would, it seems likely to me that most cyclists on, on the typical streets in Tacoma Park are not going to be riding on sidewalks for all the obvious reasons. They're going to use the, the, the streets. We've got sidewalks on Wildwood Drive, thanks, uh, for the last four years. Uh, I don't, I've never seen a cyclist on any of those sidewalks. You just can't go anywhere very fast unless it's a child riding a tricycle or something like that. Or, uh, so I, I, I don't think changing this law is going to, uh, have a material effect except to encourage, let people know that if they need to use sidewalks because of their sense of danger, uh, that, that they should be encouraged and allowed to do that. And ironically, where I've had the most discomfort with sidewalk, uh, with, with bicycles as a pedestrian is on the hiker biker trail that runs along Sligo Creek, because that's designed for both. Uh, it's, you know, it's asphalt, it's wide enough for bicyclists and pedestrians, but when those cyclists come and I, you, you're walking along with the dog and you hear somebody shout, "On your left," you're thinking, "Which is my left?" And, and you tend to move the wrong way. It's just sort of like a squirrel in the middle of the road. It can't decide which way it's going to, and, and, and I'm thinking, "Doggone it, why are these guys and gals riding on where I want to walk?" But then I think, "Well, this is a hiker biker trail." We're not going to have that problem on, on about ninety percent of the sidewalks in our city. So I'm inclined to think that this is a good, uh, a good way to go.
Okay. Councilmember Kovar?
I'd like to say, first of all, I certainly agree with, um, allowing wheelchairs. I don't think any wheelchair operator would have ever been arrested in any case, but I think we should allow them. Um, I'll be agnostic on the coasting as to whether we should address those. Um, I think, uh, for me, also children learning how to ride with supervision of adult is fine as well. Uh, what Councilmember Schultz mentioned in the sharing, uh, routes along Sligo Creek, and I walk there frequently with my wife, um, you know, one of the questions I have is, when they announce that they're on the left, it, it isn't really to slow down, it's just to continue at the same speed. So that's one thing that makes me a little bit nervous. Um, obviously, in some short areas, a cyclist could hop off and just walk their bicycle, but they're not going to do that for a long period of time. And I think Mr. Edgell's comment suggested that in an ideal world, we wouldn't do this. We would find the, the dedicated bike lanes so that cars would be in one place, bicycles would be in another place, and pedestrians would be in a third place. And it seems as if what we're talking about is what's going to happen for certain unsafe areas. And for example, New Hampshire Avenue is, is a key one, and I can certainly understand on a, on a route like that, in particular, it might be difficult to contemplate riding a bicycle. So one of the questions is, though, should we say, we'd rather not have riding, have bicycles on sidewalks, except in areas where it would really be extremely dangerous to ride a bike on a street, as opposed to saying, because there are some areas where it would be really dangerous to ride a, a bicycle on the street, let's allow riding on sidewalks everywhere? You could do either of those. My inclination would be to, if we were going to allow it at all, and my general sense would be no, but if we're going to allow it at all, to limit it to very specific areas where we know that it's a dangerous safety problem, as opposed to saying, because that exists on a modest percentage of the streets, we have to allow it everywhere.
Councilmember Kresch?
Thanks, Mayor. Um, I have communicated with Mr. Edgell about this, and I think when you were last here in October, I expressed my opposition to this idea. Um, and I don't think anything that I've heard and read with your good efforts has persuaded me otherwise. Um, but I do want to say, because we had an issue that came up last week, uh, that does not mean I don't appreciate your efforts and what your committee has done, I just respectfully disagree. As a biker, um, Councilmember Schultz, I know, made some comments in support of it, but actually, to me, some of the things that you raised in the context of your comments only further note to me why having sidewalks shared by pedestrians and bikes, bicyclists is just inherently unsafe and unpredictable. Um, the idea of "on your left," I, I hike and walk that trail and ride that trail a lot with my children, and it is disconcerting when a bicyclist is coming through and children don't know how to react to the term "on your left," and they don't slow down. Um, the other thing is, I don't know, I know the city manager earlier described that very rarely is it enforced against children. Um, how about adults? Is there any statistics on that from the police department?
I spoke, oh, I spoke to Captain Collington, and he said, in his years, it has never been enforced against anyone, adult or children.
Okay, what is your name, I'm sorry?
I'm sorry, I'm Jamie, I'm the, Ernst, I'm the planning intern.
Oh, thank you, Jamie.
Sure, thank you.
Um, Jamie, don't leave yet. Um, is there any anecdotal evidence, and maybe Mr. Edgell can talk about this as well, and I'm not trying to create a back and forth, Mayor, um, from our crossing guards and what they perceive to be, uh, the potential impact of the safety of the people that they're guiding across intersections and the use of those crosswalks and sidewalks for purposes of travel?
I have not spoken to the crossing guard, so I can't comment on that, unfortunately. I did speak to Captain Collington, as I said, though, if it were enforced, it would be a, simply a citation, but he said he has never personally enforced it, and no one on the police, in the police department has enforced it either.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, so there's, I think, lack of any empirical evidence that suggests to me personally that this is a problem that we need to address. Now, there's been a discussion about people feeling uncomfortable on Carol Avenue and Ethan Allen, um, and people feeling uncomfortable about the incline. There's people who feel uncomfortable on a daily basis of getting on the Beltway, so they find other ways of getting around. If you're going up a hill, and trust me, I sometimes choose to not bike up Westmoreland because it sucks. It's very steep. Um, so you make alternate arrangements. Um, Carol Avenue and Ethan Allen, to me, are bad examples, if you want to support this, because the sidewalks along those roads are also so narrow that you cannot, uh, the thought of being in front of Roscoe's Pizza and coming out in a bike, going down the bike, the, the narrow sidewalk, to me, is really troubling. Um, so from my perspective, I think that we're trying to fix something that isn't broken. We're not overly enforcing this amongst the police department. I get the idea of not encouraging our children to actively engage in illegal conduct. So my proposal is, and, you know, and the other thing is, I fully support the idea of wheelchairs on sidewalks. I never thought that that was a controversial issue. Um, I don't think anybody expects wheelchairs to go down the street. Maybe this is our way of sort of supporting, some do, yes, electric wheelchairs do sometimes go down the street, but I think this is, if this is our way of encouraging and supporting wheelchair occupants, I understand that. But my proposal is to not encourage, and sort of in line with, uh, Councilmember Kovar, our kids to break the law openly, that, that the only, um, amendment or provision that I would make without supporting the rest of it is no driving on side, bikes on sidewalks, unless a sign allows, and I don't think we have an instance here that I would support where that would happen, or wheels are less than twenty-six inches in diameter and the rider is twelve years or younger. Um, that has been used across the country in many jurisdictions, um, to address the issues that we've raised with children and with the types of bikes that I think don't pose a threat to pedestrians and don't travel at the rate of speed, uh, that I think we're concerned about. Um, so that's where I am, and I can read that language back if it's necessary, but I don't, I just don't support this because I don't believe there's anything in controversy here. If it's really making people comfortable about getting around, like, for example, New Hampshire Avenue, and I commute into DC for work on bikes, I don't take New Hampshire Avenue. I probably could legally, but I don't, just like some, my mother-in-law doesn't drive on the Beltway. So I think, to me, there's other ways of getting around, um, without changing our city law in the process. Thanks.
Thank you. No? We're still, just, it's a work session, so we're still just debate, do, would you like to speak to this? Okay, Councilmember Simmons, would you like to speak to it, or no?
No, it's, it's a difficult issue. Uh, my inclination right now is to, uh, support Councilmember Kresch's, uh, perspective on this. And so if, uh, if he offered that as a, uh, an alternative, uh, his proposal, I would support that at this point.
Great. Um, and I'll just say, um, you know, I approached this in the fall from the perspective of worrying about pedestrian safety, um, but then over the last couple of weeks digging around, um, the studies I actually found and the reports on biking blogs and other places spoke to the safety of the cyclist. Um, so there's been studies out of, um, Canada that said the, that looked at everything from the age, the, um, sex, the speed at which somebody was going, um, on their bicycles, and they said the relative rates for falls and injuries is safest to cycle on road, followed by off-road paths and trails, and finally, the least safe is on sidewalks. The absolute event rates per bicycle in kilometer, because they're, they're measuring kilometers, was found to be between ten and forty ti, forty-one times higher than similar rates for automobile travel. So that was one study. Another study done in the US found, again, that sidewalks incur the greatest risk to, um, bicyclists. Um, and the League of American Bicyclists recommends that bicycles stay on the road and that the sidewalk, um, is a significant cause of bicyclist motorists crashes and creates unnecessary conflicts with pedestrians. Um, even the Department of Transportation says that you should not, bicyclists should not be on the sidewalk. So I was, went out looking for data and studies, looking at pedestrian safety, and I was actually kind of surprised to see so, so much, um, talking about the safety of the cyclists, um, biking on the sidewalks. Um, my concern with trying to do some hybrid of, yes, these streets, no, those streets, is that, um, people aren't going to know what streets they can, what sidewalks they can bike on, what they can't. Um, and so my concern is that the assumption, and the myth that many of the blogs talked about, is that biking on sidewalks is safer, but it's actually not for bicyclists. So I worry about, and I understand from Councilmember Mel's perspective, this isn't encouraging, but if we say and we allow biking on sidewalks, it is sort of saying it's okay implicitly to do that when all the evidence I've seen says it's not okay, and in fact, people strongly recommend against it. So I guess I'm having a hard time changing our laws when I, all the data that I've been shown, and I've asked if someone can show me something to the contrary, um, or even have an entity that studied this suggest that bicycling on sidewalks is okay for cyclists, and so far, I haven't seen anything to that effect. Um, so for, for me, I'm where Councilmember, uh, Kresch is, and I think the, the studies I've looked at, the distinction they make between children riding on sidewalks at the age of twelve or younger is that they're usually learning how to ride and their, the speed at which they're going, um, is different. Um, so I would support the change that, um, Councilmember Kresch moved forward.
Can I ask a question about that change?
Yes.
Or that, I know there's no motion yet, but would that allow for a supervising parent to also be on a bike in that situation, or would the parent have to ride in the street?
Not as I read it.
And what, do you think that is a valid, uh, addition to address it, or just leave it for the children?
I mean, at the end of the day, our police department on a daily basis exercises discretion about how to enforce our city laws. I think, my guess would be, given the history and what you testified to as being zero enforcement on this issue in its current regime, I think just limiting it to children with that twenty-six inches in di, diameter or less than, and twelve years or younger, sends a clear message to the community that's consistent that we're making this exception for children. Um, now, of course, there may be instances where parents are accompanying them, but I, I defer to the better judgment of the enforcing authorities that are going to be looking at it.
Aye. Councilmember Schultz?
Um, question, uh, for Jamie, what, does, does staff have a recommendation? Because I, I don't seem to have the document here with me.
Um, staff, to my knowledge, we don't have a formal recommendation, but the expectation is, if bikes were allowed to be ridden on sidewalks, it wouldn't significantly impact the number that are already riding, um, and the idea that it's not currently enforced seems to indicate that, um, the law is not, the law in place isn't serving its purpose, I guess.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, it would, it suggests to, to me that in all the years Captain Collington has been a captain, and before that, a sergeant and a patrolman and all that, that he hasn't had anybody file a complaint such that the police would have to tend to it and, uh, address it and sort of say, "Oh, gee, Mr., you know, you shouldn't have been riding on the sidewalk," but that's just a supposition on my part. So I, I agree with my mayor that riding on sidewalks in a bicycle, uh, is a pretty dumb thing to do because the sidewalks are narrow and you've got all these incredible obstructions and ups, ups and downs and, and that sort of thing as, as, as well. Um, and I also have the, of the mind, after listening to everybody, is that whatever we do here isn't going to make any difference, whatever the law is. It's that, you know, people are going to use the sidewalks when they absolutely are scared to death and they got no choice, and they say, "Screw the law, I'm getting on the sidewalk because I'm scared to, you know, scared. Um, I wish I hadn't rode, ridden this road, but now I am, and now I need to get on the sidewalk and walk my bike or, or do something like, like, like that." I just think that a, a good compromise is to designate certain areas in the city where people are permitted to use the sidewalks. We pretty much enumerated a lot of them right here and put up signs saying that, but also reinforcing the idea that stay off the sidewalks all the time everywhere else. Uh, and I also think maybe a, a two-year review of this ordinance, if we were to pass it, would be eminently reasonable. Thank you, Jamie.
Thank you. Um, Councilmember Mel?
Yeah, the, the, the.
Oh, I'm sorry, sorry.
Yes, if I could just say one thing, I, I think, you know, this, the city staff didn't take a position on this. Um, I personally don't like biking on sidewalks for a number of the reasons that have been spoken about, but, um, I do have a pretty strong commitment that I think that there are certain roads that we should be making bicycle lanes on. And so I think that, you know, my takeaway, I appreciate cleaning up the language. I can flip a coin about how I feel about this particular provision about biking on sidewalks, but I, I take away a much stronger feeling that accommodating bicyclists on the streets in a safe manner is our best choice, and I'd like to, you know, where we have those options, make sure that we, we try to build that in.
Councilmember Mel?
Yeah, let me just address a few specifics. Uh, I didn't weigh in on children on sidewalks, fully supportive of, uh, describing that explicitly in the language. Uh, Councilmember Kresch described as fine. Um, I think that we should have explicit language, if we don't choose to go with this version, that says that on the block or in the stretch of sidewalk where a bike share station is placed, that those are places where it's explicitly legal. In fact, in the city, it is already signposted, uh, that you're supposed to go onto the sidewalk to bike, so the signs are in contradiction to our city, uh, laws. Um, uh, there's the issue... There's the issue of novice bike riders, which wouldn't be addressed, which are really the target. And then, let me describe to you the situation in which I violate the law in almost every day when I commute right now. And it just, it doesn't, you, you know, this, Councilmember Schultz's, I'll pick on him, he often describes getting speeding tickets. And, you know, you know you're doing the wrong thing, you don't, you know, if you think about it. And I don't like violating the law every day, but if you're going eastbound on Carroll Avenue, there's plenty of room to bike. There's a nice bike lane through downtown city center. I mean, it's not huge, but there's clearly space, and that street is designed in a way through some work that was done about 15 years ago to slow down traffic and make traffic behave conscientiously. That's a street where I think many bikers would feel comfortable, and it's not the bike messengers, right? You know, going 40 miles an hour, you're good in almost every street. It's people going sort of a casual pace in suits and, you know, work clothes. You get to the fire station and that bike space is mostly gone. And not only that, but the road, the lane itself for cars is narrow. Then suddenly, the road widens for, from the fire station to the entrance, the first entrance to the parking lot, the municipal lot. And then shortly in that stretch, from there to the light, to the co-op entrance, the bike lane goes to zero, goes to a, a cut into the curb, so you have six inches to ride your bike. And further, once you pass this, the actual co-op parking lot entrance, the road lane itself narrows. So for cars themselves driving on that road, the car itself now, so that our pedestrians, as, as the city manager and mayor know, our pedestrians fear for their lives on the sidewalk from cars jumping the sidewalk. And so in that circumstance, we can't, without eminent domaining properties, create a bike lane. And so if we want people to bike along our level of street, you can't do it. And Councilmember Schultz described New Hampshire Avenue. So that's the situation where I look at traffic, there's six o'clock in the morning, there's never any pedestrians, or very few pedestrians on the stretch, but typically, unless I'm in front of traffic, if I'm going with traffic, there's already cars next to me, I go up on the sidewalk until I get to, until I get past that constriction, and then by Woodland or before Woodland, I'm back in the street again because it's just crazy dangerous. And it's, and I think the studies don't reflect, the studies reflect accidents of people, you know, losing control of their wheel, falling on their face, cutting their chin open, needing stitches, breaking arms, but I think it's situations like that where people die. And, and that's what the studies don't really address, and that, that's what people are correctly perceiving. I know that's what I'm perceiving, and I'm sure that I'm right in this situation, that, that I risk death by being in that space where, where I have this much room for my wheel.
And I, and I would just note that if we actually transcribed the, that little path that you took, it'd be perfect for the next Tacoma Junction meeting that talks about mobility around the, the site, so.
And let me just pivot to maybe what you're going to say, which is, I heard Councilmember Kovar describe a version, which was, leaving out the, the children piece, bicycles may, may not be operated upon sidewalks except in locations wherein, in the judgment of the city manager, it is necessary for safety and control and to encourage bicycling. That would deal with situations like Tacoma Junction, like New Hampshire Avenue, would allow the city manager the discretion to deal with bike share stations, so we don't have to legislate bike share stations, which, whose name may change.
Right.
So I think, you know, that's another way to go at this, which I, I could support as well. And my last comment is just, my apologies, I have to catch a train at 10:10, so I'm going to leave very shortly and not bike to the metro station.
Can I ask you one question?
Yeah.
So in that instance where you pull up on the block, sidewalk, maybe that's only half a block or so, or a block and a half, if I understood, but you do it, right? And you haven't been arrested.
Correct.
And so, I mean, it, it sort of strikes me, this, this is one of those things like, you know, when you occasionally don't quite come to a full stop at a, at a stop sign, but you look around, not that I would ever do that, but I know that people do that, and no, it, it, those things are not going to be enforced by our police unless there's something else going on too. And so I acknowledge that you're smart to do that, and I think most good bike riders would do that, I'm just not sure that translates into having to authorize it throughout the city.
Yeah.
I guess is where I come down. Maybe if there's a way to just say in short spurts where, you know, otherwise it could be excessively dangerous, I, I could be open to that, but.
Yeah, and just a quick comment is, I didn't put forward this proposal, our residents did, and because people feel strongly about.
Right, I, I understand.
Right. And I think the, you know, my concern with the picking certain places, you know, if we just pick Ethan Allen, I can give you a number of emails of people who specifically said to me, do not let bikes on Ethan Allen, because there, we already have concerns with kids walking to school and other things. So I, my concern is, is that somebody may say, oh, we need it to bike, if, if we're using discretion on which different roads. I don't know, I, I, I worry about that because I think, you know, I, I would say, yeah, I understand from a bike, if I'm biking, if I was on my bike, I understand why you would want to be on the sidewalk on Ethan Allen, but when I'm jogging, I also, I'm, I have, I'm in that perspective, and I'm also have talked to parents who have had many meetings with us about, and state highway, with trying to do something there because they're, they're worried right now about their kids walking up and down Ethan Allen, even without the presence of any bikers.
Mayor, can I just make one point? And Councilmember Mail, correct me if this is not a rhetorical question, because you're an experienced bike rider, and I think in the context of community or public comments, there was discussion of amateur bikers and people who are learning and the uncomfortableness that comes with that. In the scenario you described, I don't think there's anything that precluded you from remaining on Carroll and Ethan Allen in the center of the road besides having a car behind you that's probably not going to be too happy with you taking up the entire road. Is that right?
Yeah, I mean, I assume that bikers in those situations are more likely to be stopped by police for obstructing traffic and you take even greater risk of your safety.
But under the law, I think you have the right of way, just like a motor vehicle does.
Sure.
And then, if you're an amateur rider.
You have a disagreement from the Safe Roadways Committee.
Okay, well, then they can correct me when they want, when they have an opportunity. And I'm, I would like to hear that. And if you're an amateur bike rider, nothing precludes you from making a right at Capital City Cheesecake, getting on Columbia, and taking the back route over to Woodland as opposed to staying on a state highway road.
Yeah, I mean, I'll, I'll take that as a non- rhetorical question. Roads weren't built in America for cars. They were built for horses, pedestrians, bicycles, eventually for cars, for horse-drawn carts, then for cars, and they're, they're originally intended to be multimodal means of transportation. And so what, what you, you have just said is that bicycles are second class. They should take, they should go uphill, downhill, take a longer route to get to where they want to go. They can go down Westmoreland, get off Carroll, get off state highways, get off the most convenient ways to get home. And that's, as a policy, that's probably where the country was for 50 years. And what, what urban planners have been trying to do is figure out how to give bicycles somewhat more equal stature. And that's what the city's done a great job of with all the bike lanes and, and sharoes and sharing areas that the city's created. But just telling bikers, go somewhere else, is, is generally a big step backward in policy.
Yeah, I, I, I see your point, and I don't think that nothing precludes what us from doing what the city manager described about whether there are other avenues for us to lobby the state to make these state highway roads more accessible for bikes. I don't think that these are mutually exclusive things, but I'm just trying to underst, I'm just trying to make a point about how there's habit that's involved too. There's a reason why there aren't bikers biking down New Hampshire, all the way down North Capitol to DC. Maybe because there are parallel bike paths along the way, but there aren't at every sector going north and south. There's what, 11th Street and similar areas like that, so that's all, that's all I really wanted to make.
Actually, before, before you leave, Councilmember Mail, can I ask you a question though? Because I, I am truly struggling with this because I was anticipating, you know, after doing this search, to be like, okay, I'll give up my own personal feelings to what is the recommendation of bicyclists and other things. And I was really, really surprised when I did the research that I could not find one bicycle organization or others that, that was advocating for biking on sidewalks. And so my question is, and this is what I'm struggling with, and I'd like your perspective on it, if we set a policy that says, okay, you can ride on sidewalks, but we know from the research that it is more dangerous for cyclists to be on sidewalks, like, how do we do that? Like, I, I, that's what I'm really struggling with. All the evidence tells me that this is more dangerous for residents, and so if we pass a law to say you can do it, like, or we're ignoring all that research, and then what if something does happen to a resident because they said, well, I'm supposed to be able to ride on a sidewalk? Like, I'm really struggling with this.
We can tell.
No, you have an answer for it because I like.
Kind of like a squirrel.
The way, the way I'd answer it is I would use the preamble to the resolution, and I would say, the city's, the city manager captured the city's goal, making more and more of the city's streets accessible and safe for bikes, bicycle, and other modes of transportation. That's the city's highest priority. The city council recognizes that bicycling on sidewalks in many situations is, the evidence does not, appears to show that it is not particularly safe for bicyclists themselves with regard to the, the streets with lots of curb cuts, narrow sidewalks, and encroaching vegetation, however, or whatever the appropriate next whereas is. Whereas there are streets in Tacoma Park, particularly state highways, that there are not near, near-term solutions to make them bike accessible, and that in those situations, the safety, there may be safety benefits, and there may be benefits in terms of encouraging.
Or maybe we're allowing it up to the cyclist's own judgment.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I took away from the discussion. I think, you know, I've heard a couple different things here, and, and to me.
I just need you to do this.
I, I will, I will say that I really appreciate the cleaning up of the language, if nothing else. However we decide about the bicycle on sidewalks section, we can, we can deal with this. I, I heard a couple options about the kind of the size of wheel and age, so, you know, maybe something, if, I don't, should we just come back for like a second work session with a couple options?
I think a second work session, because I, I think what Councilmember Mail was going out of a preamble, and if we're doing it as, you know, the cyclist will be using their own judgment, we're not, so we're not saying it's allowable, and we're not saying it's, it's.
Jacket?
Your jacket.
Yeah.
Thank you. So we're not saying it's against the law, and we're not saying it's allowable, kind of, you know, it's like that middle ground. And the other thing I was wondering is, I know we usually don't, but we already have a link on the Safe Roadways to Schools, League of, of American Bicyclists, some of their videos, and they actually have a video about, kind of, it says like, it's dangerous to ride your bike on a sidewalk, but if you're going to do it, here's how to do it. And it was actually filmed in Tacoma Park, which I actually think is really super interesting if no one has seen it. I just found that earlier today. So that actually might, in addition to that, be something we have, where we have the other links, so that, and then, you know, maybe even doing an article in the newsletter or something like that, or, you know, like, that promotes this, raises that there, that it isn't just the assumption that, oh, anytime you ride on the sidewalk, you're safer type thing. Oh, I have lights, okay. Councilmember Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. First, I'd just like to say I'm not a cyclist, so I don't really have, you know, a lot of experience, but I do want to let everyone know that there is a Senate bill, SB 142, there's going to be a task force that's going to be created to study bicycle safety on state highways. So this issue is going to be reviewed, hopefully in the next year or so, but it's SB 142, if anybody wants to take a look at the bill. Thank you. Oh, and, and one other thing, I do support Councilmember Koreshi's language about just having kids be able to use sidewalks to ride their bicycles.
Great. Councilmember Kovar, did you have something else?
Just briefly, I'm, I'm fine with the idea of an additional work session, since it seems like we haven't reached kind of the level of clarity, maybe we might want to, I'm, I would be wary of doing kind of a middle ground thing where you imply it's neither for, for or against, but I think we have to pass a law that says something, and it, it doesn't really work for me to say, you can do it if you want, and we're not saying whether it's legal or it isn't, or, or whatever that was.
No, but we're not saying it's safe or unsafe, like, we're not passing, like, anyway, we can debate it more later.
No, I'm just giving my initial sense to that, is that that's kind of twisted and tortured a little bit there, so.
Like this lady?
All right. All right, so we're going to do another work session on this. Councilmember Schultz, do you need to?
To wave the flag for senior citizens who we would like to be able to encourage. I'm a senior citizen, so I'm going to speak for them. He's too young yet, and that, who would like to ride bikes? Maybe it's just not children, but it's the other end of the age spectrum too. I'm done.
All right. Did I forget anything else tonight? No, I think we're done. We're adjourned.